Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? I believe we have a quorum this evening. And much appreciation to everyone who rerouted their commutes this evening so that we would be able to get on the Internet. Beverly is currently experiencing a small outage with the Comcast Internet. So we are here, remote, yet sort of co-located socially distanced at the McEwen School and other various locations. It is 7:04 PM. Welcome to the Beverly School Committee, Committee of the Whole. Today is Monday, July 20th, 2020, and we are meeting virtually using a remote-meeting application provided at no cost to our district. BevCam is broadcasting tonight, and I'm recording a backup copy of this meeting. This is allowed under the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order entitled "Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law 30A, Section 20." This order specifically suspends the need for a quorum and the chair to be physically present, and asks our body to use technical means to allow public access to our meetings. Joining us today are members of the school committee and various members of the district administration leadership teams. I will conduct a full roll call of attendance in a moment for the record to make sure we are captured. As a preliminary matter, we will be watching for people who want to be recognized during the chair. This meeting does not have opportunity for public comment. Our members will use the hand-raised button or indicate in front of your video camera, or if you're socially distanced in this room, just indicate that you would like to be called upon. It's important that you disable your video if your bandwidth starts to falter, and that way you will at least be able to recover your audio. I would ask that we do not use the chat functionality at all this evening unless it completely relates to a technical issue such as the loss of sound, and that I would ask that you endeavor to speak clearly into your microphone so we can have an adequate record of this meeting. Also, please remember that any audio or video that you supply on this platform will become part of the meeting record, and as such, I encourage you to use your mute functionality to prevent background noises. I will call on you to unmute when you're recognized. So, members, I now would like to conduct a roll call to confirm that you are both able to hear me and see me this evening, and that we can hear you. So please come off of mute to affirm as I call your name, and other participants, I will do the same in just a moment. Mayor Michael Cahill?
Hi, Madam President, I'm here.
Okay, great. Ms. Kimberly Quayle?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, excellent. Ms. Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
She's present, she's in front of me?
Yeah.
There we go, and Mr. John Mulady?
I'm here, hello.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Robinson?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Larynda Visnick?
Madam President, I'm here, and I'm going to tell you that I can hear you even if you don't hold your microphone up to your mouth, so you could maybe be a little more relaxed in that.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and of course, I'm Rachel Abel. I am in the room with Dr. Suturocek. I also am around the corner from Donna Bergeron. I have Ms. Dr. Dorothy Flaherty also in my view, and Ms. Sherburne is on a well-deserved vacation. Mr. John Harmon, I saw you join us. And Ms. Bethany Splansky, I see you have joined as well. I see Ms. Aaron Sweeney. Paul Layton from the news is here. Let me just scroll for a moment. I see Ms. Julia Brotherton, thank you for joining. I think that's all I'm seeing on my screen. We have 16 total participants. I'm sorry, Ms. Gabrielle Montivecki, I see you have joined us. And I sincerely think that counts, our 16 people. Tonight's supporting materials were distributed to members via email threads and Google Docs. To the public, all of these materials will be provided in the public record on beverlyschools.org in a timely manner, and much of it will be presented on my screen, technology rolling, during this meeting. As a final reminder, any and all votes will be done by roll call, and it will be called by the chair this evening. We anticipate entering into executive session and not returning to open session as our final agenda item this evening. We will need time for this executive session, and we do have our attorney standing by, so we'll be mindful of our time. We may need to roll any unfinished business from tonight's agenda into a meeting that we are planning for Thursday, July 30th, and at that meeting, we do plan to further discuss our reopening plans for submission to the DESE. Okay, with that, our first order of business is actually the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have a flag on my computer I could share. Let me just share that for a moment. Could I ask, Mr. Mulady, I think it would be easiest if you could lead us in the pledge this evening?
Sure, I'd be honored.
Thank you.
Rock, we have to stand up now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, appreciate that. Our next agenda item is actually the approval of the meeting records from our June 24th Committee of the Whole, which was a joint meeting with the Finance and Facilities. I'd entertain a motion to approve those meeting records.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick, and I see a second from Mr. Mulady. Do we have any corrections, edits, addendums? I'm not seeing any hands. We will do a roll call vote for this approval, and we will start with Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
And Kimberly Quayle?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti? Yes. Okay. And Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. John Mulady?
Yes.
Larynda Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. That passes seven to zero. We'll enter those into the official record. Next, I would encourage Dr. Churocek to come off mute. I'll be muting my line while we hear some reports about our programs. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. I am going to, if it's okay, share my screen. Do I have permission to share my screen? Okay, let's hope that worked. There we go. All right, I'm going to get back to the beginning. Sorry, I should have been, I should have been in queued the right way. There we go. All right, so thank you very much. I have, this is just the superintendent's report. I think if you look at the agenda, I have a few items all in a row. I'm going to actually call in a couple people that are here with me to do some of the presentation as we go through. I had listed first the summer programs, and really, my update for the summer programs are just that we are in, beginning our in-person for some of our extended school year tomorrow. We've been remote for the first couple of weeks. We have all the training done for staff. We've created all the protocols that we need, and we have a small subset of our population ready to report tomorrow. So I know Bethy and I were meeting today. We made sure that we had all of the appropriate PPE that we needed on hand, and they will begin tomorrow at the Beverly Middle School in their small groups, and we're looking forward to welcoming them in the morning. So it will be our first foray sort of into welcoming in some of our youngest and most vulnerable students, but we're really excited about that. I mean, in addition, the high school is running their credit recovery, so the credit recovery high school has been going on for two weeks. That's going well. I think about 12 students are enrolled. I think I might have reported that earlier at another meeting, but we're also up and running on that one as well. So in terms of summer programming, that's where we stand. I know that a lot of you are anxiously awaiting an update on our reopening. We will be reopening, we just aren't sure how we'll be reopening, but I have some information to share and some updates regarding some of the work that's been going on. I'm hoping to fill you in on some of that and certainly answer any questions that you have. I don't know if your phone was ringing off the hook tonight, but I did send out my survey, so a Connect Ed message went out this evening to all of the families in Beverly, either through Connect Ed or through Aspen if you are newly registered family, but everyone should have the survey in their inbox, and we're really encouraging everyone to take a look at that and help us as we move into our planning phase. So the first area that I wanted to talk to you tonight about, I have three different areas. The feasibility study, I have some information on that, sorry about that, from, and I know I had mentioned earlier what that would entail. The principals have pretty much completed, taking a look at their buildings and determining the capacity in each one of their classrooms. I have a quick check on our capacity analysis for transportation. I'll be meeting with Dana Kruipshank tomorrow. We'll be talking in more detail, some of the things that we'll be doing. I'm going to give you just an idea of what the three basic models that we're being asked to present to and examine our ability to provide for students, and then a quick update on some school safety protocols that we have put together. So first, in terms of the feasibility study, we were asked to do a building capacity analysis, taking a look at our classrooms and spaces and our common areas, and determining basically how many students could we fit at various physical distancing models, at a three-foot model, that is the minimum recommended model from the Department of Ed. We also examined in Beverly at 4.5 feet, and then again at six feet, just to give everybody an idea of what that would look like in our buildings as we tried to return to school. And we also took an analysis of recapture space, which really just means if we aren't going to be using the music room or the art room in a traditional way, what would happen if we were to utilize space, and how much space would we need in each one of our buildings? So this is a picture of the Beverly Middle School. This was a six-foot distancing, I thought a visual representation of what it actually looks like when we move the furniture around. I think even some of us were surprised as we looked at what it would look like, but this is one of the classrooms in the middle school with the desks distanced at six feet. This is a picture of a elementary classroom at the Ayers School, and again, this is at four-and-a-half foot distancing, utilizing various furniture that we have, because one of the questions that we have is, as we do this distancing, many of our elementary schools in particular are commissioned with furniture that is round tables or furniture that might not be the kind of furniture we would want to be using if we were trying to do a distancing model. So we asked to take a look with various pieces of furniture, what would that look like? How many students would we be able to accommodate in a classroom? And then finally, at three-foot distancing, and then this is a picture of a elementary classroom at North Beverly with the desks set three feet apart, that's what three-foot distancing looks like in a classroom. And finally, the diagram over here is just one of the guides that we were provided by the Department of Ed as we were asked to set up our classrooms and take a look at what this looks like in each one of those models. So that's really, just to explain how we managed to it, you'll notice that we do have to take note, in each classroom, there's unique entrances and exits, so we have to make sure that we're leaving space around that. We have water fountains and stinks in some of the classrooms, and so we need to space around those because we would want to maintain, we know that students will be utilizing that frequently, and we also have to allow space for the teacher, sorry about that, at the front of the room to be able to manage. So those are the constraints and what we did. Here is sort of the results. I sort of broke them down into more of a, just different ways to take a look at it. I asked each principal to look specifically at, and I can try to make that a little bigger, but can you, hopefully you can see it, how many desks would you need in your building? What are the number of desks you can fit in each classroom at three-foot distancing, at four-and-a-half foot distancing, and at six-foot distancing? How many classrooms would you need with the configuration of the number of students that are enrolled in your building and the number of desks that you can include in different classrooms? And then I also have a list of the number of classrooms that are available in each building. So as you can see, for example, at Ayers, at three-foot distancing, they only need to use 19 classrooms, and they have 22 classroom spaces available. However, at four-and-a-half foot distancing, they need 25 spaces, which that is three over where they would be, and if they were to attempt to bring all students back to school at six-foot distancing, they would need 33 classrooms, which is a lot more space. We were asked to kind of provide this information, I think, just in general, so that the, there was a general understanding of how much space we would need and other things. In addition, we were asked to take a look at what additional staff we may need if we were trying to bring all students back in person at the different distances. So even at three-foot distancing, right now at our elementary level, we would need five additional staff to bring all students back in person if all of our students were to return in the fall. We would need 13 staff at four-and-a-half foot distancing, and we'd need 41 additional staff at six-foot distancing. Again, that would, that's, that was, is more an exercise in mathematics than practicality, I think. And then finally, how many additional desks would we be required to have on hand? And so at Ayers, in order to have all students in any combination of distancing, we'd need 100 extra desks. Centerville has more desks than Ayers, so they would only need 15. Cove School would need 85. Hannah actually must all be in desks right now, so they don't need any additional desks. And at North Beverly, they would need 81 additional desks. So I mean, and then finally, at preschool, we know that we would need some additional tables to safely accommodate all of our students. Their furniture is very different, and some of their tables are smaller, and so we'd need to take a look at what that would be. So that's just a recap of what it would look like at an elementary level. We have the same opportunity to take a look at this in middle school. We asked similar questions of the middle school. So how many desks can fit in the following distances in your smallest classrooms? And so for them, at a three-foot, at a six-foot distancing, they have a capacity of 12. At a four-and-a-half foot, they have a capacity of 22, and at six-foot, at a three-foot, they can fit up to 30 students in a classroom. How many desks in the larger classrooms? Again, the numbers go up a little, 15 in the, at six-foot, 24 at four-and-a-half, and 30 and above at three-foot. We asked how many classrooms would you need at each grade level to fit 100% of your students? And so their numbers are listed here, 14 and 14 at the fifth and sixth grade, 15 and 15, that would be at three-foot distancing. That is actually what is pretty much allocated for them at this point in time. However, as you move out into a four-and-a-half foot, they would need 16 and 17 classrooms in grades five and six, and then 18 and 17. And then, again, exercise sort of in futility, but they would need 28 classrooms at six-foot in grades five and six, and 30 classroom in seven, and 28 in grade eight. So we asked how would you, what repurposing of space would you need to do? At the elementary, it's simpler, they already have, they have a designated art, music, or STEM room, and those would be their first choice. At the middle school, they would be looking at moving foreign language classrooms into the maker spaces, using the art rooms, tech ed, engineering labs, band, chorus classrooms, various spaces. They'd need to spread out and use all the spaces they have available. And then what general ed staff would you need in terms of at three-foot additional? They don't need any additional staff at three-foot. At a four-and-a-half foot, they would need additional, two additional staff in fifth grade, three additional staff in sixth grade, two in seventh grade, and one in eighth grade. And then at six feet, well, yeah, they would have to double their staff, so that would be a lot. And then finally, we did ask them to check about students fitting into the cafeteria at six-foot distancing. Six-foot is the recommended distancing for eating because your masks will be off, and so at 88, they can fit 88 students in each one of their cafeterias at a six-foot distancing. That would be just looking inside. We also asked what alternative ideas do you have for lunch, including outdoor spaces? So gym, if they were not being used for classroom space, outdoor space would be possible to set up tenting. We are examining that. And then the maker spaces on the first and third floor could also be alternatively used for cafeterias. How many desks do you have? They seem to have plenty of desks. They might need 30 additional desks at the full capacity, three-foot, and lunch tables would be a challenge for them. And then the final question was how many rooms have sinks and how many spaces would not have sinks? So most of them have sinks, and they have five general ed classes without sinks. So we will, what we will do in classrooms without sinks is be providing some hand-sanitizing stations for them to work out of. And then also, they're required to identify a space that's a second isolation sickroom away from the general infirmary for anyone who is displaying any symptoms associated with the COVID virus. And then we finally had a feasibility at the high school, a similar, very similar to the high school. They started with their very smallest rooms. There are a number of small classrooms at the high school that accommodate some of our special education students, so they would have had four, six, and eight in their very smallest classrooms, but typically, their classrooms are much like at the middle school, 12 at six-foot, eight, 16 at four-and-a-half feet, and then 20 to 25 at the three-foot distancing. Same ideas on repurposing of spaces, utilizing the cafeteria or the library or the auditorium, and what general ed staff would they need to accomplish? They'd need a minimum of 11 additional teachers to make a full in-school model work at three-foot distancing at the high school. They can fit 124 students in their cafeteria with six-foot distancing. They have examined, they could fit about 75 additional students in their library for lunch if they were to need to do that. They would only need about 50 desks to manage what they need to do, and then they have 16 classrooms with sinks and 79 that do not, so that's areas that will need to be taking a look at hand-sanitizing stations, and they have identified space for their second isolation sickroom. So in general, that is what our feasibility results are. We're going to compile that all up. That's a big part of the report that's due on July 31st for us to send to the Department of Ed, but we were asked to take a look at what it would, what we would need to do all of those things. And actually, it's been very helpful in terms of us kind of wrapping ourselves around what are the possibilities of things that we can take a look at. Sorry. So we did the same with transportation, taking a look at capacity analysis in terms of busing. I want to be clear, we do not have the final guidance from the Department of Education on transportation yet, however, what we do know is that the distancing rules will be in effect in transportation, no matter what we do. And so we took a look just at the buses that we have and the seating and the capacity. So currently, on our seat, on our buses, our large buses have 24 seats. They accommodate 71 elementary students and 47 secondary students. Elementary, we typically may seat children three to a seat, whereas in secondary, we only seat two to a seat. Our mid-sized buses have nine seats. They can fit 16 elementary and/or secondary students, and our mini-buses have four with seven seats. So what does that mean in terms of in distancing? If we're looking at our large buses, at six-foot distancing, really, we can only fit 12 students based upon the diagrams that you see down below. However, at three-feet distancing, which is the minimum recommendations right now, we can fit 24 students in a bus. Again, I'm, this is just for sort of perspective as to what we'll be talking about in the future around transportation, as we don't have any final transportation guidance coming our way just yet. Again, finally, our goal for the fall is the safe return of as many students as possible to in-person school settings. We are working really hard to determine how we can best do that, how we can best manage that, remembering that health and safety is at the forefront of all of our thinking when we're doing it. But we also have had an opportunity to consider, we know that we're concerned about academic loss for students in the absence, but we also have the opposite side of the social-emotional loss that, and so for a lot of us, that's on our mind, how can we find a plan that's going to work to meet both of the, both areas for all of our students? I think I've said it so many times, I don't know who I've said it to anymore, but if you haven't already heard, we're required to create a plan and submit that plan to the Department of Ed by July 31st for three different possibilities on a continuum of reopening. That first would be in-person learning, following any new safety requirements that are issued at this point right now. We know that our aim is always for six feet when we talk about physical distancing, however, the minimum recommendations at this point, and this is a moving target, it changes often, but as of right now, the conversation is around a three-foot distance for students ages five to 18. So we will be examining what that would look like and what we would need to do in order to be able to do that. We will be taking a look at various hybrid models, which are a combination of in-person and remote learning. You'll see on your survey that I sent out lots of questions about that, asking, you know, what that, what that looks like for you and what, how, where your interest lies in some of those. We're trying to take sort of the pulse of the community. And then finally, remote learning, which we know will be a part of the hybrid model as well as something that we may, should there be an uptick and need to pivot sort of to remote learning, we need to be prepared for that. But we will also be providing a remote learning option for families who cannot, who are unable or unwilling to send their children to school, and I will address that right now. So one of, I have received a lot of questions from a lot of people, a lot of emails, for families in Beverly schools who are unable or unwilling to attend any form of in-person learning, meaning they don't, they're not, they're not, they're not feeling comfortable about sending their child full in-person or in the hybrid model. There will be an opportunity to enroll in what we believe will be a district remote learning academy. That's all still taking shape. We promise to send more information to you as we know about it, but these would be students that are engaging in 100% remote learning, synchronous and asynchronous. The option is really designed primarily to respond to the needs of those students and families who are immunocompromised. However, the learning academy may also be appropriate for students who thrive in a remote learning environment and/or for those families who do not wish to send their child to any form of in-person learning. So more to come on that. I think I just want to be clear, it will be different than the spring version where they were home on emergency and back and forth, but we will have a plan, and we will make that plan very clear as soon as we have it finalized. My survey, I've mentioned a few times, you'll probably hear from your principals tomorrow because I asked them to send a reminder out to make sure that everybody's doing the survey. The more information we can gather, the better, but really, please, one thing I want you to know, this is not a final decision on your part. This is expressing your interest at this point in time, because we really recognize that family choices may change, especially as we get continued information from the state, so we want to be sure that you are aware of that, that this is not a commitment to any particular plan. This is merely us taking, you know, a temperature of the, of the community to find out as we plan how we can think about moving forward. And then finally, a big piece of the planning process for us has been the school safety. We have COVID response leaders. We have district leaders that are in charge of the COVID response, and that would be right now, Dot and myself. We have building leaders, our building principals are the COVID response leaders at each one of the buildings. The other, so some of these safety measures that we are working on currently, the recommendation from the Department of Ed is that students in grades two through 12 will be required to wear masks, with K-1 having strong recommendations for that. I am closely watching as I meet with other superintendents and hear the conversations about whether or not their, their community is hoping to make that a requirement for K-1 as well. I'm still following the guidance and listening to the conversations, but that's a conversation that likely the committee will want to have as we go forward to make sure. We, part of our safety measures will be providing required training on personal and work safety conditions for all staff, and that means all staff, bus drivers, monitors, cafeteria, clerks, teachers, paras, administrators, everyone will have to go through the required training. We have completed that training for our summer school staff, and we will continue to work on our training into the fall for all staff. Every school will be supplied with the personal protective equipment that's required, masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, screen guards for high-traffic areas. We're looking at signage and decals for movement within the building to help with those visual cues as to when you are within six feet, just like if you're at Target and you're standing in line, there's a red dot on the floor. We're looking at, at things like that to make sure it makes it easier. We're procuring cleaning and disinfectant materials and establishing protocols for every building. The Department of Ed has issued a protocol for how to respond to possible symptomatic students and staff. We will be working through that and making sure that we have all of that in order. We have, we have those protocols in place already in case at our summer school, fortunately not had to implement them, but you know, they are available. Every building will have a medical isolation room in the, if there's a question of either a staff or student that has symptoms of a COVID virus. And then finally, and this is going to be really important, we're going to be providing training both to families and to staff about daily self-screening to make sure that they're thinking carefully and closely about their own medical well-being. That's really one of the big points of safety measures is if, and we've said it to staff over and over, and I repeat it especially to my administrators and to all of our teachers, our teachers are warriors, they drag themselves out of bed. our teachers are warriors, they drag themselves out of bed to come to work every day because they don't want to miss their day with the kids. And that is, we're going to ask them very clearly to not do that this year, as well as parents, you know, asking families to really think about how they are, you know, if their child is not feeling well, if they have a symptom, please keep them home for the day and monitor that symptom on your own. And that is one way that we'll keep each other safe throughout this whole process. So again, I have talked about this in each one of my meetings, I've met with each staff, I've met, I actually had an interview on YouTube regarding this to share information that's available if families are interested on the BevEd education channel. But this really is our combination of strategies that really will help keep us all safe. We know that masks and face coverings are crucial. Studies estimate that they're 80% effective in reducing transmission. And again, as I mentioned, right now, the guidance from the Department of Ed is two through 12 with masks. We know that every adult will be wearing a mask. And again, the conversation is that they're recommended strongly in grades K and 1. Physical distancing is another important strategy to mitigate the transmission. We are aiming for six feet, but the minimum physical distance of three feet is appropriate. That's been informed by the evidence that the Department of Ed is relying upon in their medical literature. And then hand washing, which we always knew was important, continues to be probably the most effective thing that we can do. Hand washing with soap and water is the best option, but we will be having some areas where hand sanitizer is what we'll be relying upon. And then finally, staying home when sick, as I mentioned before. Currently, we have some stakeholder groups that are working with us as focus groups. We have a district reopening task force. We have met once, we're meeting again tomorrow. And the focus of that task force is policy and communication, taking a look at policies as they come forward and policies that we have and making sure that, you know, that we are able to understand and interpret everything that's coming our way, as well as communication to the community in general. And our district reopening working group meets weekly. We met this morning, and this is a group of district leaders along with teachers and parents and students that talk about the actual planning and development of the plan that we will need to implement. Finally, there's school-based working groups, and that's going on. And really, they're the boots on the ground, they're the ones that are going to be taking a look at that plan. And we all know that any plan is only as good as it is at the implementation level when it gets put into practice. So that's really where we're relying on a lot of our feedback. We're going to continue to look for additional guidance. We have, as I mentioned, the feasibility study virtually complete. We know that the Department of Ed is sending us a reopening checklist. We have received the protocols for handling COVID-positive cases in the community. We're awaiting more resources around remote learning. That's one of the reasons why our Remote Learning Academy information is not complete because the department has hinted to the availability of some resources through them, and we really want to vet those resources and see how we might use them if they were available to us. We're developing our protocols on facilities and operations and continuing to look for guidance on some of that. Transportation, the same. We have received our guidance on our special programs and supports, and actually, I'm going to turn it over to Bethany in just a minute, and she's going to walk us through. She has gracefully taken a very long document and created four or five slides so that we can easily understand it. And in addition, we're waiting on guidance from athletics, extracurricular electives, and key policies that we continue to see coming our way. So I guess I'd stop first and see if there's any questions from anyone before I go on and turn it over to Bethany.
I have a question.
We have, sorry, Karen had just moved to the microphone here, and I see two other hands, so thanks.
So I just had a question about, obviously, the importance of staying home when you're sick. So how will that work for students? Like, I know that there's a certain number of days, and how will that work for staff? Even if they have to quarantine, even if they're not sick in terms of sick time, so staff, all staff, I'm just, thank you.
Thank you. Those are great questions. So in terms of students, I think that the Department of Ed has actually accentuated to us the importance of staying home when sick. And as such, they have waived typically as part of our accountability status, we have a requirement around attendance for students. And for this school year, it has been waived, they will not be utilizing attendance as a measure of accountability, largely because they really do want to encourage students to stay home if they're not feeling well. In terms of staff, that's a big question. One of the things we are doing in our planning for curriculum is making sure that in case of a staff absence, we have our staff planning together and cohesively across the grade levels and across all schools so that we can step in and take over should a staff member be out for any extended period. We're going to continue to take a look. There is guidance on medical leaves, those that are eligible for medical leaves and various levels of leave. So there'll be information, that would be worked through HR. We would begin by taking a look, if someone feels like they're eligible for a leave, then they would have to begin at HR, and we would work with them through that process. So we are all across the Commonwealth anticipating substitutes being a challenge to get in our classrooms. And so our principals are really aware of that, and that's become a really key part of our planning to make sure that we have backup plans and we know what we might want to do in terms of curriculum for that, if that were to happen, so.
Okay, we'll go to Ms. Biznick and then Ms. Quayle right after.
I have to turn this up to do that, so.
Fantastic, thank you. My question goes to the slides you had earlier, Dr. Trocheck, around additional staff. They seem to all be relative to the classrooms, but what about?
I can't hear her.
Ms. Biznick, your line is breaking up. I think you were asking a question about the staffing?
Maintenance, specifically for maintenance and the additional cleaning that will be required.
Your question is about additional maintenance and the cleaning. We know that there will be additional cleaning required and additional maintenance, and that's part of some of the planning that we have going on. We've been meeting regularly with Mike Collins, and you know, that's part of the planning process that we have. So we'll be addressing that. We have not got all of the cleaning protocols complete, and when we do, we'll have a better sense of what we will need in terms of, whether it's additional staffing, whether, you know, how that will work. So we're still working on that feasibility study part, that part of the feasibility plan.
Okay, Ms. Quayle.
Karen actually asked the first half of my first question, which was about attendance. But the second half of my question, the attendance, is how will this affect their school record? Will it go onto their record at all?
I mean, we have to track attendance. Actually, we typically will be tracking attendance for our own purposes so we know and can help identify for gaps in learning for students. In terms of, you know, I believe, some of the times I think about it being important are if you're trying to go to the tech and you, you know, or when you apply for places. I think the entire Commonwealth is going to be aware that attendance is going to be flexible and nimble. We're going to be flexible and nimble with attendance policies. So it will be tracked. I don't really know in terms of official school reporting. Yeah. All right.
Okay. And then the second question I had is, two weeks back, I had a meeting with Stacy Ames and a few others at the Gloucester Crossing meeting that they do on Wednesdays, and Ms. Biznick was able to come towards the end. And they're trying to do initiative with the kids for Beverly Keeps Moving. And part of it came up as transportation for the new school year, where we're not going to be able to have that many children on the bus. Could we offer an incentive for the kids walking, riding their bikes, using scooters, skateboards, or any other kind of get-go-to-school? And give them an incentive for it by offering them gym credits? To get them moving and more motivated.
That's an interesting idea. I certainly would pass that on to our curriculum people and to take a look at it. I will tell you, though, I love the idea and I love the thought that we want to encourage people to walk, bike, you know, play, get to school any way they can. I think one of the things that's interesting is we're noticing in our surveys, as we're in our second one right now, that a lot of people are considering alternative transportation than the bus. And so I think that's really positive, that's moving in the positive direction. So it's a great thought, we'll pass it on and see what we hear.
Okay, Ms. Ferretti, I think I saw your hand next.
Thank you. So first, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Trocheck. That is an amazing collection of data that I know is ongoing and will continue to develop. I have been hearing from different constituents, and I have my own concerns as we patch all these different versions of plans. And I think that, given the current state of everything, how we're still in the full throw of practicing social distancing, where as we speak in a virtual meeting, most of us, it's hard, I think, for a lot of people to wrap their head around, to wrap their head around going back, having all these thousands of kids back in the building. And I know that these are all just plans, and there's all different options that are still being discussed, and that anything could change at any given moment. But I think I just wanted to take this time to just voice the concerns that both I have and lots of parents that I'm hearing from. And, you know, I understand that kids are losing track on academics, that parents need to go back to work, but, you know, all of that in comparison to just one child's life lost if we push this through and it didn't go as everyone thinks is just, in my mind, is not worth it. But again, I know that we still have a ways to go on doing more research and presenting different plans and hearing from different resources, weighing our options. But I just wanted to share these concerns that I'm hearing from a lot of people and that I myself have as well, about putting any amount of children back into buildings in a matter of weeks. But thank you again for everything.
Yeah, thank you. You know, as you can well imagine, my inbox is quite full as well, a lot. And I'm really happy that people are reaching out and sharing information. One of the things that I'm really pleased about is the opportunity that we will have to provide that choice to parents, that we will have a remote option. So whatever we choose to do in the schools, if a parent is feeling uncomfortable or unsafe about sending their child, that there will be a remote learning option for them, as I said. And I think that gave me, I had a big sigh of relief when it was approved that we would be able to do that and that the Department of Ed, you know, would allow us to have that option available because I think choice is important. I think parents need to make the decisions that they feel comfortable with, and this offers them that opportunity. It's a little bit of a challenge for us in terms of figuring out how to make it work, but one of the things that we do well, I think, is as a leadership team and as a community, is to kind of do that nimble, flexible thing, and we try to figure out what's going to work best for our students and for our families. So we will be continuing to work on that. The survey will let us know sort of what percentage of families might be feeling that way, we hope, and that will help us as we design something moving forward for families in that position, so.
I'm looking to see if there's other hands. I'm not seeing any. Dr. Trocheck, I believe you said next, we have Beth Blansky.
Yep, we do. Bethany is on the line, and I'm going to be her Vanna and continue to share here. And so Bethany, if you're there, you can take it away, and I'll try to be on cue with you as I go.
I'm here. I don't think that your screen is shared right now, Dr. Trocheck.
I'm sorry, oh, my screen is not shared?
No.
Oh, how did that happen? I thought I was sharing. I must have gone off of. Share screen.
All right.
How's that?
That's great. Thank you so much. Okay, so as Dr. Trocheck said, I'm going to give an overview of the guidance on Special Education Services for Fall, which was released on July 9th. This was a lengthy document, and so I'm just going to provide an overview of some of the highlights as we're planning for our Special Education Services. So this document outlines the requirements to prioritize in-person instruction for two specific groups of students. The first is students with significant and complex needs, and they specifically outline that when they talk about significant and complex needs, they're talking about students who are receiving Special Education Services for 75% or more of their day. So we're really talking about students who are in full substantially separate programs. And the second group of students is preschool-age students. And so what the document says is that even if districts are opening in a hybrid or a remote model, that districts must make every effort to continue to provide up to full-time in-person instruction to such students. So that means that if we're hybrid across the district, that we would try to be offering daily in-person instruction. And if we're not able to offer daily in-person instruction, that we would still be offering some in-person instruction or some of the therapies that students have on their IEPs.
Sorry, slow.
No worries. In terms of considerations for in-person instruction, the guidance focuses on reducing the mixing of cohorts of students. And so we really need to plan in such a way that we're able to provide services to students without mixing cohorts of students. So this involves scheduling cohorts of students together, leaving space within the classroom for special educators and related service providers to come into the classroom to provide inclusive services. They suggest possibly using Google Meets to conference into classrooms to avoid having additional people joining the classroom, or if you want to work with students who are in separate classrooms. And it does not specifically say that we can't pull students out, but they do not want us mixing cohorts of students if they are pulled out, if at all possible. In terms of remote instruction, we are required to have regular and consistent schedule of classes, interventions, services, and therapies that are consistent with the student's IEP. You may recall from the spring that we had two kinds of buckets of service provision that we were using. One was resources and supports, and the second was instruction and services. And this document outlines the need to be focused primarily on the instruction and services bucket, which is comprised of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Now, this doesn't mean that if a student has a full day of services on their IEP that they're expected to sit in front of the computer for the entire day, but it does mean that we're required to provide structured learning time, schedules of learning activities, and then supplemental activities to be done at home, along with the synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And we're also required to have frequent interactions between teachers and students so that we ensure participation. There was one.
Did I miss one?
I think there was one more slide in there that just talked briefly about compliance-related issues. There we go. And so we know going into the year, the school year, that timelines are still in effect, and so we are going to move forward with holding team meetings. We'll continue to hold them virtually at this point so that we can maintain, you know, health and safety guidelines for everybody involved. We will need to plan for addressing the backlog of assessments and meetings that occurred as a result of the closures in the spring, while we simultaneously address the need to maintain timelines for the annual reviews, initial evaluations, and reevaluations. And so we're looking at different methods to do this. We are going to be using some different tools for evaluations. We're going to be looking at situations where formalized evaluations may not be necessary so that we can, you know, make the right decision for each individual case based on the timeline constraints. And then we're also advised to update the IEP as those students will be attending full-time instruction. And so we know that instruction may change over the course of the school year and may look different at different points, but the IEPs are always supposed to be written as if students are fully in-person. And then if services are delivered in a way that is different from the way that the IEP outlines the services to be, we are required to provide notice to families about those changes in services during periods of remote or hybrid instruction.
All right. Now we're at.
Yeah, looking for hands right now, I don't see any yet. Okay, I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Blansky.
All right, thank you. And then I think the last item on the agenda, well... well, item C on the agenda is really the ESAR grant. And taking a look, and I'm going to ask Dr. Flaherty to talk about the ESAR grant. She's going to come over and use the space and talk a little bit about it so that you have a general idea of what that is.
Good evening. We're too many computers on in the same spot, so I needed to be off mine, sharing devices tonight. So I just wanted to give you an update on our ESAR funding. This was money through the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund that was set aside as part of the CARES Act to help K-12 educational entities to prevent, prepare, and respond to the impacts of COVID. We submitted our application and were notified last week that our proposal was funded as submitted and so now we can go forward. And these monies will be available to us through September 30th of 2022. Why isn't this? I'm not going to read through this whole list. You've probably seen this, but I just wanted to give you the broad spectrum of the areas where we were able to use this money to help support what we were trying to do in the schools and to meet the needs of our students. And it ranges anywhere from educational technology to the PPE, to meeting mental health services, assessments and screenings for our students to be able to monitor learning loss, training and professional development for our district staff. And you can see that there are other things on the list as well. To let you know, the total allocation which we were allowed to apply for was $555,939. This is based on a per pupil cost. We do have to share this money with private schools, any non, schools, private schools within the boundaries of Beverly. We're allowed to, we, you normally have to reach out whenever we're doing our title grants, but we also needed to reach out for this funding. And even if they didn't take title grant money, then they were still eligible for the ESAR funds. And so once we met, not all of the schools took it because some of them were able to apply for the business loans that were out there as well. But of the schools that did want to partner with us, we will need to set aside a pool of money for $78,655. And this is based on the total enrollment at each of the schools, not just for the Beverly students that are attending those schools. And the realization and thinking behind that is that if we have Beverly students going to a private school outside of Beverly, they will be incorporated in those schools. So it's based on their total enrollment. Three major areas that the spending is going to for the private schools, they're looking for the money in order to help with the expenditures for PPE, some professional development and training for their staff around COVID and the safety protocols that they'll have to have when they come back. And also, one school is using it for some math tutoring to help with learning loss for students. So once you reduced that out of our total allocation, the Beverly Public Schools funding was $477,284. I'm going to go through the broad areas of the budget and where we're spending the money. The first area and what was the proposal and the Desi was very pleased with this and actually asked us to keep them apprised of how it has an impact on our students moving forward, will be for a Director of Opportunity Access and Equity. This is actually a position that we had originally proposed in our SOA funding. The SOA funding, as you know, due to what has happened since COVID, has been set aside. We haven't heard anything about that. This is a position that we do think is critical and in fact, we will have to build it into our regular operating budget for next year. But for this year, the entire salary as well as the retirement and insurance will be taken out of the grant, so there'll be no impact to our operating budget. This will give you an overview. We do have a full job description in draft form that we're just finalizing. But the key focus areas and what we wrote into the grant as to why we believe that they should allocate the funding for it include helping us to reach out to our under-engaged students from the spring and also in the fall, should we have to go to a remote learning plan that have learning gaps and that we're going to work to address. And we want to make sure that we are closing those gaps so that all students are prepared and able to access higher-level coursework in expectation of the next grade level. This will start out the position working in grade seven through 12 so that we can really focus in on preparing students that want to take higher access, higher-level courses at the high school and are meeting all of our requirements for college and career readiness. The position will also oversee special projects. That brings an equity lens. We are looking at and have found several protocols that we'll be using in the coming year to look at our literature, especially in our English classes, K to 12. And so that position would be helping us with that review. They will also, the person will reach out and support our students that experienced any mental health needs, will work very closely with our school adjustment counselors and guidance counselors for students that experienced mental health during the closure. And that was a reason for them not being able to access remote learning and perhaps also causing the learning loss. Our lower socioeconomic subgroup, students of color, students with disabilities, and our L students were in the highest percentage of students that experienced the learning loss as a result of school closure. And that's mainly because of lack of participation. We do have some really good benchmark data that showed that students that were participating and engaged in remote learning did not have any learning loss, in fact, continued to make their grade-level gains as they went forward. We've been meeting and reviewing that data with principals since school closed. The person will also serve as the district Title IX Coordinator and will be the liaison for the after-doc program with Essex Tech. And again, this will be incorporated into our FY22 allocated budget. The next area that we have funding is for $116,754. This is mainly going to fund stipends for teachers so that we can do after-school, perhaps before-school or even weekend or vacation programs. This could be during the school year. We're also covering through to this summer and next summer. We do have several schools that are going to be running short programs right before school opens up to help students that suffered with some anxiety and school phobia to help them to feel comfortable coming back into school in September. We'll be looking at contracting some services and that's $35,530. We really valued our professional development opportunities through Primary Source. However, as you know, that was one of the curriculum areas that we updated for eighth grade and the three through five curriculum. And in order to pay for that, we use the money that we had been using for professional development. And so this is a way to still stay connected for teachers outside of those two areas to continue with professional development with Primary Source. We are bringing in a national speaker, Dr. Adolf Brown, and he'll be coming to speak to the district in March. Hopefully, if we're in a position where we can pack a big fieldhouse or a big auditorium, we'll be able to open it up actually to other districts. That would help offset the cost of the speaker. But if not, we do have the, the cost between this grant and our Title II A grant to fund it and it would be live but virtual. So either way, whether we're in, in, able to go into large crowds or still socially distancing, he'll be able to address all of our staff. And his presentation is renowned and the one that we've selected really kind of blends everything that we see happening in our school district and the nation right now around two backpacks. And it talks about the two backpacks that all students bring to school and that's the one that holds their school supplies. And then the other backpack is what they bring with them that we might not be able to see but affects their ability to learn and access their education. And that could be trauma, it could be racism, it could be a split between the family that they're dealing with. So we don't know what all of the, the mental health issues are that students bring to school. And it could even be as a result of being home for six months and they really are having a hard time dealing with the impacts of COVID. They may have lost a family member. So it really, I think, blends all the two major tracks of work that we'll be doing next year. And we're very excited that he'll be coming to speak to our staff. And then we'll also be using it for some consulting services. The other big area is for supplies and materials, $196,155 we are setting aside. And this will be able to cover some assessment materials that we need to monitor learning loss and literacy screenings for our younger students. It will pay for some textbooks and related softwares, that software that will be able to support remote learning. So for an example, one of the math softwares that we used during elementary remote learning was called Zern. It was free during the closure. Many of the softwares that we were able to use in the spring are now going to be charging moving forward. They're not going to be free anymore. And so this will be able to purchase the software licenses that we need in order to be able to make sure that that's still available for teachers and students. And then it will also be able to help with the PPE and sanitation supplies or safety, like the decals and signage and stuff like that that we're still working out. It will be able to fund some of that information, those supplies as well. And then you'll see we have $60,000 for other costs. What we were planning for is that we would like to, if we can find them there in short supply, look for professional-grade tents that we could put up at each of the schools that would allow for a large outdoor learning space or as an additional calf space, but will also be able to be outside to allow for more students and the fresh air environment. It will also be able to fund some student transportation services. If we have students that opt or choose to be on the remote plan and still receive special education services, we may need to be able to transport them in order to receive those services. Also, if we have any after-school program or homeless students that need to stay after school, it will be able to help to fund that transportation as well. And then finally, as you saw in Dr. Trocheck's report, depending on the distancing plan that we end up with, we may need to purchase some more desks and furnitures, and furniture in order to fit students into a classroom. And at the elementary level, it's very much focused right now around tables and that while we can still use tables, won't be able to fit as many students around them. So we may need additional furniture to support students within the classroom. And then one of the positive things about both this grant and our title grants are that we have a wonderful representative from the state that we work with and she's a very supportive resource and that we are allowed to file amendments. So should something be unforeseen or we do need something that we didn't think about as a response to COVID, we can go in and write amendments to the grant. Any questions?
Sure, let's look for a few questions. And then I do believe the school committee should take action to formally adopt that new position. Okay, looking for hands. I see Mayor Cahill. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam President. Dr. Flaherty, a couple of things. So any allocation amendments would need to tap something within these pages that hasn't yet been spent? So I'm assuming you're kind of, there's somewhere here that you're just being careful before spending it all out?
That's correct. So for an example, say we couldn't find the tents, but that we decided that, but we found that we needed more PPE in an area or we needed a software license that we didn't plan for. Then we could reallocate some of the $60,000 that we had put into other costs into the supplies and materials. We do have to get it approved, but we have to file the amendment and they're very, they're very good about working with us and supporting it if you can demonstrate why you're doing the amendment.
Right, okay. Thank you. A second question is for you and/or Dr. Trocheck. You, you pointed out that the position that you'll be asking us to approve this evening, the goal is that it be rolled into the operating budget in FY22. What I want to ask you and Dr. Trocheck to look into and consider is whether there may be, you know, assuming we, we approve this position, whether there is COVID-related funding that may support the first two years of it, not the first year only. Whether that be some of this ESAR money and/or, I know the state has held out the $225 per pupil, which if it comes through is over a million dollars. And I don't know if that similarly will have flexibility of being spent in FY22 as well, but I just kind of say it aloud to, to see whether there's something you, you can share on that or it just remains to be seen.
Yeah, we haven't, we don't have all of the exact requirements for the, the new money around the $252, but actually what we heard today is that that wouldn't be able to fund this position and mainly because it's money that is going to be very short-term that needs to be spent prior to the end of this calendar year. So it needs to be spent before December 31st. And it, it would go more for maybe PPE or for direct single purchases so that it's not something that would bridge into another school year. But there are definitely opportunities within this grant. We're also hearing that the federal government may file another program with more money coming to the schools and so that could be part of that. We also have some of the title grants, so we do have other opportunities that we can look at. And we could also have money reserved from this grant at the end of the year that didn't get allocated. We're in, say, supplies, maybe, you know, we don't need the $196,000 and some of that money can be used to support the position for a second year. So that's all definitely flexibility that we have looking and planning for the following school year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I see Ms. Visnick's hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully I have a little better, my connection is not too bad. I wish to ask about the, this grant, when we submitted it, did we ask for any additional money or did we ask for a line item to help us support providing internet connectivity for the families that we know do not have connectivity?
The, it, this, that's already built into this when we have the, which line item? The, so the supplies and materials, technology is part of that and we can use that to purchase hotspots or to help with connectivity. That is definitely one of the areas that the grant can be spent and we do have money set aside so that we can do that if we have to. And Dr. Trocheck is saying that there's also some money in the CARES Act for the same thing.
Okay, Ms. Visnick.
I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I just don't, I don't see it being itemized here. So it makes me think that we have not prioritized that.
It's, I can show you the, the application. We didn't write down everything that was in the, the thing, but technology and software and connectivity is a direct area that can be spent in the grant.
I understand it can be spent there. I guess I'm, I was hoping to see that we intend to spend it there. It is just a subtle difference and I'm willing to let that go because we're very time constrained. Maybe we can revisit that on another evening.
Right, and I think just be aware that there are multiple funding sources that are coming together and we're working with, with the municipality and many other areas to make sure. So we're, we're trying to maximize all of our resources. And so that is certainly, we are certainly committed to funding any hotspots that need to be funded. That's not even a question. So it's just a matter of which funding source we would tap. Some things are eligible for certain grants and not eligible for others. And some things are eligible for every grant. So it's the determination about where is the best place to fund that particular item from.
Our first priority in all of our planning was to make sure that every kid can have a device in their hand and they have connectivity in order to use that device should we have to go to remote learning.
Okay, I'm looking for other hands. Okay, I'm not seeing any here. I think right now we should probably entertain a motion to approve a new position for a Director of Opportunity Access and Equity to be funded through the ESAR grant application that we were awarded.
So moved, Madam President, I'd also like I'd also like to say that normally that position would come to FNF first, but again, as the Chair of FNF, I want to go on record as saying I am knowingly waiving that, that norm, given our time constraints.
Right, and as a participant in the policy review, I think we did leave ourselves this option to bring it directly to the Committee of the Hall. So thank you for that. I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Ms. Robinson's indicating that she is seconding the motion for this new position. Is there any more discussion? I'm going to call a roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Larnavisnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, we've approved the new position.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, just one final item under the superintendent's report. I did mean to mention, as Dr. Trowick had described, the task forces that I have appointed, Karen Robinson, who had volunteered to be our school committee representative on the task force. So thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, for attending those. And I also wanted to mention that at this moment, our bargaining appointments will be the same as our negotiating subcommittee. So Karen Robinson, John Mulady, and myself will serve in bargaining capacities during the reopening discussions. Okay, our next item, if we could move right along, we do have our attorney standing by. I've told her that we're going to be a little bit longer, but we have a couple of resolutions that have been sent to us in advance, along with a letter from the authors. I do need to interject that I inserted the MAS C sample. It's a very short, I called it 5A, resolution at the front of their packet for us to have the opportunity to evaluate it. Many districts have actually adopted this resolution. As of the 16th, we have 162 other districts that have adopted the resolution. So I just have inserted that here. But I would ask that the authors of the other three resolutions briefly give us an introduction.
Madam President, you want to entertain a motion to pass the PPE resolution first?
We can certainly handle that one separately.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And as I described, this is the MAS C sample. It's been adopted. The only difference between ours and every other district is that it names our district specifically in the first line. We have a motion and a second. Do we want to have any discussion or are we ready to vote?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. As I'm looking, whoops, as I'm looking at it, the only thing that, under the resolve, we don't have the power to make the state fully fund, so I'm just reading it. It feels a little awkward as it's drafted. I wonder if, if Ms. Visnick and Mr. Mulady, as the proponents of these, would entertain an amendment to say resolved that we call on the state to guarantee every school district full reimbursement?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not opposed to that, but I'm not the author of that resolution.
Yeah, this, this was a sample directly from MAS C, and I didn't make any changes. I'm not sure that other districts have made changes, but I would make that insertion. I think that's a fair representation.
Okay, let me, so I'll make, should I suggest an amended, amended motion then?
Sure.
Okay, that, that we amend the motion so that the language of the resolve reads now, resolved that we call on the state to guarantee every school district full reimbursement. It's, the rest is the same as Bergeron. So it's resolved that we call on the state to guarantee, dot, 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 everything else.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll second that amendment. Okay. Any more discussion? I don't know if we needed to be as formal as to vote on the amendment and then the fall, but let's just vote on the fall with the amended, as amended. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
John Mulady?
Yes.
Larnavisnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, we have passed the resolution with amendment. Thank you.
Madam President, would you like me to introduce the other resolutions now?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm gonna hope that my connection is fairly good. Gotta love Comcast. Dear fellow school committee members, this letter was in the packet, but for those people watching from home or streaming, if they have internet, given the totality of recent events, we bring forward the following resolutions. Though closely related, they are presented separately for consideration and vote. Quote, "The country is in deep trouble. We've forgotten that a rich life consists fundamentally of serving others, trying to leave the world a little better than you found it. We need the courage to question the powers that be, the courage to be impatient with evil and patient with people, the courage to fight for social justice. In many instances, we will be stepping out onto nothing and just hoping to land on something. But that's the struggle. To live is to wrestle with despair, yet never allow despair to have the last word." Unquote. Dr. Cornell West. With Dr. West's quote in mind, we believe that collectively these resolutions propel our school system into a leadership position in the areas of increasing cultural competency, combating systemic racism, and improving social justice in order to provide equity for all our students and staff. Please know that these resolutions are born of a continuation of many deep, thoughtful conversations and initiatives and plans already happening in our schools and in our community. Our goal is to celebrate those good things, empower our staff to expand upon them, look for the good and share it out, find areas of improvement, and ensure that growth happens everywhere. These resolutions have been informed by a number of events, including but not limited to the list below. The ideas contained within the resolutions come not just from elected officials, but from students, parents, and members of the MTA. Included is background and reference information that also inform the creation of the resolutions and which you may find useful. Finally, please know that the language used in the resolutions is intentional. For example, there's an effort to not use the word diversity. In the context of current events, the term diversity is often used to represent the desire for more non-white people. Such interpretation of the term assumes that white is the norm. In an effort to be as open-minded and welcoming to all members of our community as possible, we're intentionally choosing to avoid use of that term. Thank you.
Mr. Mulady, did you have any introductions?
No, I don't, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to.
So recognizing that we have some time constraints this evening because of our other pressing business, I am wondering if we are looking to have conversation or if someone was prepared to make a motion?
Madam President, if I could?
Yes, Mayor Cahill.
I want to say, I want to say thank you to Mr. Mulady and Ms. Visnick, and I really appreciate that these are before us. I think we do need a few minutes. I get questions on, maybe not all of them, but maybe, I've got a few questions, jot it down. Just want to be understanding of some things before voting. Are you folks good with just making motions one at a time on these and still trying to work through them fairly quickly, but giving them the time they need?
I'm happy to take them one at a time. In that sense, I guess I would make a motion to accept the resolution establishing a curriculum based on racial justice.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Is there a second?
I second that, please.
Okay, for discussion? Oh, sorry, Ms. Ferretti?
For compiling all of this, and it's certainly a step in the right direction. I wanted also to say that this is so much information that I have spent a lot of time going over it, and I do have a couple of questions before going to entertain discussions, but I'm not sure I would be ready to vote on this this evening because, you know, we just, this is a huge topic, and we do, considering a lot of as well.
Thank you for pausing, Ms. Ferretti. The computer had to catch up with your thoughts there, so thank you. Was that clear for people not in the room? It took a second for the computer to actually start broadcasting her. I think so. I think we're good now. Other committee members? Mayor Cahill, did you, did you have?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on this one, if I could, Madam President. So in the therefor's, I want to ask Dr. Trowick if the therefore Beverly Public Schools were encouraged, will encourage and incentivize teachers and staff to continue their education. The word incentivize, I know that there is a component in the contracts for some, some course reimbursement, and that we, we did some work on clarifying that in the last contract. Could you give us an opinion, Dr. Trowick, as to whether you read this language as consistent with the requirements we have for staff when they, when they put in for course reimbursements? Because that's what incentivize sounds like to me, is essentially that there'll be an opportunity to get reimbursement for the, for the work?
Yes, so thanks for asking that question. I, I had that question myself. Incentivize, we actually provide reimbursement for credit as teachers take them, and otherwise, if it's a professional development that we are delivering ourselves, we pay for it, you know, we pay for, we don't require staff to pay for our ongoing professional development that we have. So I, if the intent is that we would provide credit reimbursement at the level that we have in our contract, then that would be already incorporated into the budget. If it was a thought that there was something different going on, then that would be, you know, something that we would need to be just looking for a different funding. I'm not really sure what the intent was, so.
Ms. Visnick or Mr. Mulady, it sounds like it's something that we could, we could work through, how, how, how this piece would actually play out, you know, semester by semester, year to year?
So, am I allowed to talk? So, thank you very much, and so that, that's, that word, you know, Larnavisnick and I kind of went back and forth about in terms of what that word can mean to somebody else. And I know that anything that we would decide to do would need to be negotiated with our bargaining unit, but it could be, you know, if a candidate's coming forward and they happen to be, you know, certified bilingual in certain languages, maybe they could have some sort of, I don't know, something, something going forward to that. Doesn't necessarily have to be a monetary compensation or incentive, but to put that language in there, it would basically be, you know, our teachers, you know, take robust PD and then something that Dr. Trowick has been working on since she was the Assistant Superintendent, and it's something that we've been trying to encourage as well. But it could be that, you know, for a teacher that gets the coursework that's available over the summer, maybe instead of taking, I don't know, a biology class with Salem State, get to spend time doing a whale-watching expedition. I know my mother-in-law got to do that when she was teaching Hamilton. Maybe it's taking, you know, a class focused more on, you know, creating a more culturally robust curriculum. So I'm, that's, that's where the intent was, to try to get our, our teachers and staff to, when they're taking their PD, to kind of narrow their focus and gently push them that way. That was helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that we also talked about the idea that oftentimes in a, in a work environment, you're granted a title, especially in hard economic times. Sometimes you'd be given a title instead of being given a necessarily a monetary raise. And so there's maybe some kind of designation that we could begin to promote and encourage our staff to have, and not, not that a title replaces a monetary incentive, but rather, if I can say, oh, I'm sort of, you know, I'm a Microsoft-certified technician, that says something. I have to spend some amount of money to do that, but then I have a title after my name in my professional world. And so maybe we, as a district, can make some type of title and, and look at, look at it from that perspective to say, you know, these, these particular sets of classes, we do think give our teachers a real leg up on cultural competency and being an anti-racist, and therefore we would give them this particular title. So that was another idea behind the incentive clause there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So it, it sounds like the, there's, there's room to interpret and work with this language together, and together with Dr. Trowick and team, it sounds like.
Right, and I think the other thing I want to say is that we are very mindful in the fact that when you set goals, they should be SMART goals and, you know, all the, all the acronyms in that, in that word, timely and measurable and, but we also were, wanted to leave some room for how do we actually do it? And so to that extent, this one is definitely undefined.
Okay, thank you. I did have one other question on, on one of the other therefor's, and that, it's the one that speaks to the graduation requirements. And I do, before I ask that question, I do want to say that I think there's a lot of, a lot of good thinking obviously in here, and my hope is that even as we, and I hope, you know, many to all school districts are looking to, you know, to make improvements and changes in curriculum, I also do hope that the, that the state will be, you know, in, in the coming year, in a couple of years, will be making a lot of those same improvements across the board in, in many subject areas, and that there'll be more guidance coming from the state down to districts that'll support and reinforce the conversations we're having and the, the things that are in these several therefor's. So, you know, I, I think there's, there's good momentum towards that with the legislature and the Baker administration. So, so just to have said that. And then on the graduation requirements, again, it's a question for Dr. Trowick as to, you know, can, is this consistent? Can we, it's also a few years out, which I understand, but to, to add an additional course to, to graduation requirements or to within the total credits that are currently required to articulate and specify something that, that does this. And I'll just read it aloud for anyone that can't see it right at home, that Beverly Public Schools will change graduation requirements by 2025 to mandate that all of our students take at least one course that has a focus on race, the focus on race and inequality, bias, or prejudice. Can that be consistent with our abilities, Dr. Trowick, as we articulate those requirements?
Yeah, that's a great question. I actually had touched base with Mrs. Taylor on that because that was one of the questions in, you know, certainly not because it's a wonderful aspiration and something that we would want to think about. I think her only, the only challenge, and it's not even a challenge, I think, we think we can make it work. However, the freshmen, typically if we are changing graduation requirements, we would inform them as they enter their freshman year. So the, I think the rising class, you know, there was some conversation and discussion. But certainly, you know, I think Mrs. Taylor thinks it's some, and I- and I know that she has actually already had some conversations about this with other, with her cultural climate group. I believe one of, Mrs. Viznick's son had made a proposal to her about such a course. So they had had some conversation and discussion about that to begin with. And so it's something that they had been thinking about in advance. What would a course look like? How could we incorporate it? Something that we're all interested in doing. So I think short of the only, I think the only question would be how to roll it in. Certainly, they'd have to eliminate something else that they were taking because there is a set of core requirements that they have right now. And there would be some adjustments that would need to be made. But something that can be worked on with Mrs. Taylor and her, you know.
And I believe, Ms. Ferretti, it didn't quite get across the interweb. I don't know if you want to restate just a couple of your concerns?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So can, am I audible now? Okay, great. So I was just saying, I first thanked Mr. Malady and Ms. Viznick for putting all this information in front of us. I think it's fantastic and certainly something that we should be moving forward with. But on that same token, I just had said it was, it's a lot of information and given the scope of everything else on our plates at this time, I just wasn't sure if I would be prepared to vote this evening. But I did have a question just about some of the data in here, the percentages on, whereas the section on the percentages of discipline as well as the proper rate. Do we?
Well, Dr. Turocik heard the question, so we'll let her respond.
So thank you. I'm lucky that I actually did.
From overall student population or the subgroup student population? And if you could assign some numbers to that to just help me understand that section a little better? And I can read it if it's unclear as to what I'm referring to.
Well, that was an interesting interpretation. I'm glad I heard the question live because now I do know what you asked. So thank you. Yes, I'm not exactly sure the source of the data. I do have, I know that there's data available on the DESE website. I think it's difficult sometimes for percentages to translate into numbers of students. We do have that data, and I'd be happy to, you know, share it with you if I could get it. I do know, and again, I can, I'm happy to have a conversation with both Mrs. Viznick and Mr. Malady around their source of data. But I think, you know, I think the general gist is that we're looking to try to figure out, make sure that things are equitable, make sure that our practices are strong and good. But I can certainly provide that for you. Okay?
Members.
Yes, Ms. Viznick?
That data is directly off the DESE website.
Okay.
And I guess to Ms. Ferretti's other question, you know, if you take the number of students and you do the math and you divide by what percentage is, for instance, African-American, and then you do the percentage of how many of those students are disappointed, you can come up with a number. I think that if we were to represent those numbers that way, you would not get a sense of the disproportionality. And that is exactly what we're trying to bring to light here from a proportion point of view. We are disproportionately disciplining our subgroups, racially subgroups data. And then similarly, when we do our disciplining, we disproportionately suspend our non-white students compared to our white students. And so we can absolutely do the math and put a physical number there, whether it's 100 students or 10 students, but it's the percentage that really brings out the differences.
Real quickly, I think that just highlights a question I had in my mind about our policies and our mandatory discipline approach. I do wonder if we need to think about this in concert with our policies and understand a little bit better, you know, if we adopt a resolution, are we then creating conflict or some other issues? That's just a question, I guess, in my mind. Not really a question directed to anyone, just a question in my mind at this moment. Ms. Ferretti, I see your hand again.
Yeah. Sure.
Try a different way.
We'll try it this way. So I just was clarifying that the percentages are based on the subgroup. So you have 10 in one group, and it's the percentage of that 10. And then, like, if it's 1,000, you're taking the percentage of that subgroup. Is that correct?
The data is exactly as the DESE reports it.
Okay.
Yeah. So yes, you know, there on the site, there's numbers and there's percentages. And I'm not, again, I don't know exactly the source, but I'm certainly happy to talk to anybody afterwards and share the numbers and let you know what they look like.
Thank you.
So I guess, Madam President, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Viznick.
I wish to be incredibly respectful of my fellow committee member who thinks more time is needed. But I do wonder how much more time? And I know we're under a time constraint this evening. We don't normally meet in the summer at all, and we already have yet another meeting on our calendar. I believe that next week, when we meet to discuss the reopening plans, I personally would like that meeting to be on nothing but reopening because that is an incredibly, I mean, these resolutions are also incredibly important. But reopening, I think we need to give it its own meaning. And so unless there's something blatantly wrong in this resolution, I would really like us to, despite my previous statement that I said I want to be respectful and maybe push it, I don't see where we can push it to. And there is a, you know, we are at a moment in time, and I think we have an opportunity to take that moment of time and make it into a real tangible movement. I don't want to lose the momentum, and I don't want people to think, whether they're my constituents or whether they're, you know, a student who's, you know, hanging out in my backyard socially distanced or, you know, holding a sign at a political rally or whatever, there is a desire for this. We've seen the petition. We've seen the number of signatures on that petition. Our mailboxes are full, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I wish, if there are no more questions about this resolution, I wish for us to, I want to move the motion.
Move the motion. Can I just politely ask Mayor Cahill, incentivize with the description that Mr. Malady has given you? Is that clear enough? Or I just don't want to see us making amendments to the language.
No, that is, and that is. And thanks for asking. If I could take just a minute. I mean, if Mrs. Ferretti feels she needs more time than tonight affords, and understanding what you're saying, Mrs. Viznick, and I understand your points on both points you made, that about the reopening plan and about this. Nonetheless, I mean, if, I would also be fine with giving this some amount of time next week. You know, I'm not sure that it needs a lot. If Mrs. Ferretti has an opportunity to track down answers to some questions in the meantime, you know, if we have a bit of conversation next week, I think we can still devote the time necessary to the reopening plan conversation. I think, you know, at different times in the past, we have afforded each other, you know, different opportunities for, you know, a week or two to come back to another meeting before a vote gets taken. And if that's what Mrs. Ferretti is feeling that she needs, then I think we probably could still get done everything we need to next week. Just thinking aloud here with you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill.
So I will reiterate my question. How much more time is needed? I think the packets went out on Friday. So that is an honest question. How much more time is needed? Will we be able to get to it next week? And during our meeting next week, how much more time than at that meeting? Do we expect that we're going to have to take away from the reopening plan in order to talk about these?
I would say, Madam President, we wouldn't take any time away from the reopening plan. We'd be together longer next week. I'm just, you know, just going from, you know, previous experience. I think we probably could get everything done next week that we're talking about.
I'm looking at Dr. Turocik real quickly, and I'm just wondering if you have any reservations as written? Do we need more time?
So I guess, you know, again, I don't have reservations about these, but I also want to stipulate that next week's meeting on the reopening isn't the final one, that we won't be talking about a final decision or a final plan. We'll be looking at the models that we're presenting. The final decision on the final plan will be following week.
Okay, so it's not as much of a pressure cooker next week on that front?
Just to clarify. But again, you know, I just want to make sure that we're clear. The submission that's on July 31st does not require a vote. That's really more me just informing you on the reopening plan and where we're at. The larger final plan will be the following week. It won't be on July 30th, unless I have, I don't think we will.
Okay.
And actually, we can ask to wait until after the 31st to do a final vote from the school committees, so.
Right. I think, yeah, I think the final vote is mid-August is what the DESE was. But I thought, August 10th, okay. I thought MASC had advised us that we should be voting on what you submit on the 31st.
It could be, I don't know about a vote, but it's not your final plan.
Okay.
There's nothing binding on, I'm new to this. Sorry. There's nothing binding on the vote. If there's a, if you were just voting on what, it's not a binding submission. It's a submission of the feasibility study and all the information that we've gathered and all the information that we have and the three models as we see them, as we do them. But the final vote on what Beverly would like to do is a submission on August 10.
Okay. And I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that those plans are something that we can afford. So, I don't know. Okay?
We'll get more votes.
We're getting further.
Two bites of the apple of the voting then.
Okay, to vote, okay. Similarly, I don't think I see anything that's disagreeable in these. I did have just slight questions about how this weaves into everything else that we have responsibility for. And I hear Ms. Viznick's move the question. I'm looking to see if we are ready to vote.
Madam President?
Yeah.
I mean, technically, if I understand moving the question that's supposed to shut down any discussion, you know, there's a lot I like here. And I have several questions about the recruitment proposal and a big question about the Juneteenth proposal. And, you know, so I mean, if we're going to keep talking and be expected to vote this evening, we're going to be doing this for a little while longer, and I'm okay with that. But I'm not sure that I'm going to be ready to be supportive of everything here, and I certainly would like to be. So I think there's some opportunity, you know, to look into some things between now and next week and give this its time next week. And, you know, being sensitive to the points that have been raised, I still think that that might be the right way to go here.
Mr. Malady?
Thank you very much. So just to clarify, it sounded like with this particular resolution before us about curriculum, Dr. Turocik sounded like you were comfortable with what's on the paper. It sounds like with this particular document, we haven't had any more additional concerns or questions. I've received zero phone calls and zero emails in opposition about these documents. I've received zero phone calls and zero emails in clarifying questions about this. People have been waiting their entire lives, and this is a multi-generational thing, to see their voices heard in the curriculum. To push this particular one off a little bit more, I think, is completely insulting. I think the mayor said a long time ago that good things tend to silo here in Beverly. And I was at a Zoom call with him, Dr. Turocik and some others. And that's when I first heard about some of the good that was being attempted by our schools. And I felt like my hands were kind of tied with open meeting law because I wanted to talk about what was written. It was in the editing process. We're talking about systemic racism. We've all, as people who are white, have benefited from this system. None of us created this system, but we can start making some chances to pick away at it. So if you're not comfortable or not prepared, you can always abstain. But I would like to at least vote on curriculum tonight to kind of clear up what's coming up down the road. And jokingly, I said to my wife, "We're going to tackle systemic racism and then figure out how to open up during a pandemic and fund our schools during this big economic crisis," all before naptime. So we're going to start taking those little steps that we can take.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. I think that you've encapsulated some of the difficult, you know, conundrum we have right now. Do I have any? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the resolution as it is with a second.
So, Madam President, I'm just trying to be mindful of the collegial component to this with the seven of us. And, you know, if Mrs. Ferretti's not ready to vote tonight, but would be ready to vote next week, I could see trying to honor that.
I still, I don't under, I asked a question. How much more time and what areas of the, can we please, like, try to talk about what areas are not giving you enough time other than the fact that you seemingly don't like the numbers that came off the DESE website? I don't, because, Mayor Cahill, with all due respect, I don't want to wait another week to then have a conversation that, you know, it would be like there's a typo or there's, and goodness gracious, help me if there is, my OCD will kick in.
That was one of my.
Oh, goodness.
And I didn't want to bring it up, but now that you have, yeah.
Oh, okay. You can be my editor, Miss A. So, you know, like, from a preparation point of view for my own self, if we're going to talk about this in another meeting, and for instance, if I knew that, okay, let's use another, let's make a hypothetical situation. If Dr. Turocik had said this evening, "We cannot make it a graduation requirement," then for the next meeting, I would prepare a response or an edit to the resolution that would make that be more acceptable to either Betty or to Dr. Turocik. Right? But with just like a blank slate of, I don't know what might be coming next week. I don't, that's my reservation about waiting another week. In the meantime, we saw that our city council counterparts proposed something on Monday, and they voted on Tuesday. They didn't even have a weekend. They barely had 24 hours. And what they voted on was perhaps much more important or at least on the same level of importance as the collection of these resolutions.
Okay, I see two hands. I see Ms. Ferretti and Mayor Cahill afterwards.
Thank you. I'll go back over to the computer.
You need to unmute yourself, Mrs. Ferretti.
Oh, okay. Well, I unmuted on my, do you want to unmute that again? All right, thank you. We're sharing devices. So what I was saying was, it's not that I don't like the numbers that I'm seeing on DESI, or that I don't 100% agree with the foundation of what you're doing. And I refrained from reaching out to have discussions just in being mindful of open meeting law. It's just a lot of information, and I'm not trying to delay the vote. I just thought that having one more week would just give me some answers that I was looking for. And if I'm the only one, then we can proceed, but it sounds like Mayor Cahill also would appreciate some more time. Yeah, as Dr. Trocheck was just saying, I would vote on the one part of it that Mr. Malady was saying.
That's all that's on the motion, I believe, right now, Madam President, right? I only motioned for this particular resolution?
Yes, for the one labeled 5B, the curriculum based on racial justice.
Right, not the batch of all three of them? So, Madam President, you're in the room with Ms. Freddie. I don't know whether she's moved back away from the speaker or not. I don't see her on the camera, but so does that mean we can vote on this one?
We can, we can vote. Mayor Cahill?
I think I heard Mrs. Freddie say that she's not interested in delaying a vote on this, on this proposed resolution on curriculum.
Okay. Yeah, we can vote on this, yeah. Yeah. Could I make the amendment that we fix a few typographical errors that I'll convey to the authors before we publish the version?
Absolutely.
Okay. They're minor, they're really minor, but I do this for a living, so, sorry. I shared that concern about not violating open meeting law by having discussions outside of the meeting, and I was not quite sure if we were going to go right to it. But we'll call a vote on this. I'll call it the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Coelho?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
John Malady?
Yes.
Larninda Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion on the resolution by the Beverly School Committee affirming our commitment to establish a curriculum based on racial justice has passed this evening. And Ms. Visnick, I will give you the four edits.
Thank you, and thank you to the rest of the committee.
Okay, we do have our attorney standing by. She'll be dialing in very shortly, and at that time, we likely need to move on. We have two other resolutions. I was actually prepared to make a motion for recognizing Juneteenth as an annual celebration to end slavery in the United States. So I'll look for a second.
Second, please.
I caught Mr. Malady first, even though you're sitting closer to me. Thank you. I did have a question real quickly, and I know that the calendar is what the calendar is. The next celebration of Juneteenth would be on a Saturday, the next would be a Sunday. So I had a clarifying question for now there, for be it resolved. I am wondering, when we say holiday, are we suggesting that this is a day off, or is it a day to recognize, like, we would not at all comparison, but Valentine's Day is a holiday that we don't necessarily take off from school? So I guess I'm looking for the clarifying answer from the authors, if it's intended that this is an actual day without school or not.
So in doing the research for this, it's entirely up to the school committee and/or the state in how we choose to recognize it. I just am very appreciative of the enthusiasm for this. I think it provides an opportunity, I think I said this in the resolution, to have those natural conversations in class, you know, what is the meaning of this holiday-wise on the calendar? I think, I just think any format we choose to do would be the correct one, and I would, you know, defer to the collective intelligence of the body regarding it. I think I can hear Dr. Trocheck's teeth gritting about a possible day off in June. So I think, given how precious learning time is and how packed the month of June is, we're probably better off, or better serving our kids, as well as our staff and our parents, for it being a school day, but finding a way as a community to honor that as a holiday. It will allow, you know, certain students in our system to feel like they're being seen, as well as their parents and their caregivers.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have other questions from the committee? Mayor Cahill, thank you.
Thanks, Madam President. That's really the crux of what I wanted to ask about, because the term holiday is a little bit confusing to me in that sense. Well, there's a part of me that would want to say, absolutely, let's make this a full-blown holiday. There's value here. The other part of me is saying, okay, what does that mean in a couple of ways? One, given where it would fall on the school calendar every year. In some years, it might be after the last day of school, if we don't use our snow days and, you know, things like that. So the, what you just expressed, Mr. Malady, is something that I think is, you know, the thought that we would, as a district, put some extra emphasis and time and attention and to really, within school, celebrate all that, all that comes with, you know, something that happened that never, slavery never should have happened, freedom came far too late, but, you know, but something that we can and should make something real of in school. And I guess, you know, that's, I look at the language of the resolution, and it's just, I don't know what the definition of holiday really means, you know, and as we're looking at it, is it something that we by definition are not in school? So.
So the interesting.
The language, you know, I'm not sure if we have the right language or not, right?
The interesting thing to remember here is that for the next three years, it will be a Saturday, a Sunday, and a Monday towards the end of our school year. So I think that our duty is to set the calendar each year, and we can be mindful, based on the resolution, to decide in the next three years. I mean, the third year is really where we'd have to make the decision, but I think recognizing the holiday and the celebration is impactful. I don't know if there's anyone that's really raising their hand. I think we might be ready to vote. Okay.
I guess, Madam President, just to follow up.
Sure.
The language, recognizing Juneteenth as a holiday on the Beverly Public School calendar, I suppose we've expressed in our discussion, our legislative intent, that it not necessarily be a day that school is not in session, but that it's a day that we find a way to recognize and celebrate appropriately and really as strongly as we can. You know, because there are times that, you know, that people look to the record for legislative intent in passing something, and I think this would be one of those times.
And I think we have the same discussion about Good Friday or any of those other holidays that we recognize and have to decide each year when we set the calendar.
Okay. I guess, as we're taking this vote, there's not an expectation that school would not be in session on that day in a given year. It's an expectation that we'll find a way to appropriately recognize this day.
Right.
Madam President, again, I think that this one, kind of like the word incentivized in the last one, there needs to be, I think we recognize, there needs to be quote-unquote wiggle room. We want to declare our intention, that we recognize that it's important, and we want it to be, you know, maybe it's just on the calendar. You don't necessarily get a day off, but the words are there, and by the words being there, we're recognizing them. If we physically take a day off, great. And as you say, each year, we have to revisit that calendar, and this coming year, we don't have to worry about this because it does land on a Saturday.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of head nodding. Are we ready?
Just want to suggest a revision.
Okay. Ms. Robinson has a revision.
In doing so, we recognize Juneteenth in the Beverly Public Schools, starting the school year of the passage of this resolution. So we don't call it a holiday, just to make things clear.
Can you say that again?
She's removing "as a holiday," so the sentence would, in doing so, we recognize Juneteenth on the Beverly Public Schools' calendar, starting the school year of passage of this resolution.
Just for clarification purposes, so that people aren't asking, is that a day off or is it not? And considering we won't have to be concerned with that for several years, we can revise this if we need to at a later date.
So I think for some of the religious holidays, we recognize them on the calendar without necessarily having a day off. I can't remember, Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, one of them we have off, and one of them is still recognized on our calendar without the day off. Yeah, so the amendment would just be to remove the word "as a holiday" and rather focus on recognizing Juneteenth on the Beverly Public School calendar. Okay. So I think we have a friendly amendment. Show of hands. Do we have a friendly amendment? Yeah, okay. So with the little clause stricken, let's do the roll. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Coelho?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Karen Robinson? John Malady?
Yes.
Larninda Visnick?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. By a vote of seven to zero, we are now recognizing Juneteenth in Beverly Public Schools. We have one more resolution. It's after nine o'clock, and Ms. Valerio has joined us. Would the authors be willing to move this to our next week's agenda, or do we want to entertain a motion and have a very quick discussion?
Madam President, I would maybe like to make a motion in here if there are any massive complaints with the resolution, in hopes that then potentially in the week that follows, there could be some brainstorming happening about how we might make people happier with this particular resolution. But at the same time, I would totally defer to my co-author, Mr. Malady, and be willing to just totally send it to next week.
I guess, just to kind of be able to move the conversation, because this is a pretty hefty document, that if people know what concerns or questions that they have now, and that we could be prepared to start the conversation, you know, a little bit quicker when we come back. I think, you know, what we've done tonight is incredible, and I appreciate, you know, the give and take and the back and forth and all that, but this is a hefty one, so if there are any, you know, specific questions or comments that we could kick it off there, but I'd be very comfortable with starting with this particular resolution next week. Thank you very much for that. Next meeting, excuse me.
Yep, next meeting. Thank you. Yeah, I had actually numbered the paragraphs and had some comments, questions, clarifying for four or five of them, including the, on the last page, the math of the number of people if we took someone from each unit from each of our schools, and I just wanted to make sure we could fit into a conference room. But, yeah, I think if we have questions for the author, we can submit them one direction to the author, or I found a couple typos as well, so. Let's do that. We'll pick this up at our next meeting. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Mayor Cahill, I'm sorry, I see your hand now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I just want to pose this question, not ask Dr. Trocheck to respond to it, but just so it's posed publicly, so you can all understand that this is what I'm going to be waiting to hear next week on this. In the, not that now therefore be resolved, but the next two further resolves, both reference specific job titles and look to prioritize creation of or increased positions. And my question for the, for Dr. Trocheck for next week will be, you know, whether these will be, whether these are consistent with hiring priorities of the administration, and what is, you know, what would be your point of view on these positions as we look at, you know, look ahead to another budget year or a budget year after that? And, you know, as always, finite resources. So that'll be one question. And then there's the further resolved, embarking on multi-year training, I'm going to suggest just a, I think, a very small edit that doesn't assume or lock in that we can't get to more people in the first year of training, that, you know, maybe it should just say, you know, starting in for, you know, for all staff, starting and continuing. But that, you know, that's something that I can certainly send that to Mrs. Visnick. But the other, I'm just going to be looking for that to be discussed next week, the hiring priorities and the positions that are suggested.
So I was gonna, I will reach out to all of you individually or whatever to have conversations. I have not had a conversation about any of these with anybody yet, so I, you know, I'm happy to have further conversations about that. And in terms of the training, again, I think you heard us tonight in our, we are working in apparent, you know, I think it will be good to have collaborative discussions and conversations about our vision and our direction and the things that we do have planned as we go forward. As you know, we proposed a position tonight that, you know, would have, would sort of cross over in some of the ideas and some of the thoughts that you have. I think the great news is, it's really affirming to know that we're all thinking in the same direction, and we all have the same priorities around what we want to do. And so having those really good conversations about our planning process, our professional development that we have planned for next year, it'll be a really good conversation, and I think that that's a positive thing. It's affirming to know that we're all, you know, moving in that same direction, so.
And I am being reminded that we actually should not be sending questions because we have enough people here. What is the best way for us to get clarifying?
Would it be possible, Rachel, if people have a question, to submit the question to Donna, and then, not to give Donna more work, I love you, Donna, but if then all the questions get sent out to everybody, I don't know if that, if that's allowed, so we can see what some of the questions were? Kind of like, I don't know, what do we do when we?
We're in an open session right now, so I'll say, one of my questions is, can we spell out BIPOC? You know, because I can't imagine that everyone is familiar with that terminology. And then, you know, some of the other clarifying areas, well, I guess I understand what an affinity group is, for instance, but I think we maybe need to describe that rather than make an assumption that that's clear. And then, again, I mentioned in the third to last paragraph, clarifying, when you say each bargaining unit from each school, are we really intending to have 59 people? So those would be some areas to be prepared to talk about at the next meeting. I don't know if. areas to be prepared to talk about at the next meeting. I don't know if.
So, Madam President, for the, are you talking about the, the last, the third to last one, the anti-race and racism?
Yes, the joint, yes.
Okay.
We don't have to say it right now.
Well, I think, just to clarify, it, it would be one representative from each school, from each bargaining unit, in terms like that, how, you're talking about how big the number, the number would be.
We have seven, seven units.
Yeah.
So, that's.
So, so this line would, this language I got from a, a much, much larger school district, and I don't know, I can contact them for more specifics on how they followed it out, but the idea behind it, and just to give some background about the different places where these information was pulled, it's not just from brains of, to people, to get as many people in the district in, on the conversation, for this to be genuine and, and authentic to go forward. So, it could be that this is like the, the body, and then they figure out ways to govern themselves and make a smaller group to go forward.
Okay. We, we really do need to move into executive session. I apologize, they're cutting this short, and I guess we'll have to bring it back to the table at our next meeting. If, if everyone could come prepared with their questions to the table for our next meeting, that would probably help us get through it. Okay. Okay, now, let's move to our final agenda item. This is our move to executive session. The chair is going to make the motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose number seven is to review and approve the meeting minutes from our executive session meeting of the Beverly School Committee on June 24, 2020. And for purpose number three is to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the teachers' unit A, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on our bargaining position, and the committee will not return to open session this evening. So, I've made that motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ferretti. And by roll call vote, Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kimberly Quelo? Thank you. Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
John Malady?
Yes.
Lorraine DeVisnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. Seven to zero. We are now moving into executive session. I appreciate everyone for joining us tonight in BevCam. Thank you very much for recording and for being our backup internet supplier this evening. But you can go ahead and log off.